Well, the hour being three o'clock, I will call this regular council meeting to order. This twenty-sixth day of July, two thousand and twenty-one. I'm sorry? What did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the...
You're looking at the wrong notes.
All right. That meeting is out of order. I'll call this regular... Looking at the wrong sheet here, I'm not thinking. Anyways, call this regular council meeting of town council to order this ninth day of August, two thousand and twenty-one. We have an agenda before us. Are there any errors or deletions? Or additions or deletions?
Your worship.
I've got a definite... Got some mics on somewhere. I'm glad it's just not me.
I'll try again, your worship.
Okay.
Um, council consideration adding nine point three in camera item. Number three, maybe council code of conduct.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's for MGAU section one eighty-seven, two, FOIP legislation, section twenty-four, B, I.
Thank you, CEO Becker. Is someone prepared to make a motion to accept this agenda as...
I'll move the agenda as amended.
As amended, okay, thank you, counselor. Bates, all in favor of the motion? Okay, we have the minutes of the regular council meeting of July twenty-sixth for consideration. Would someone like to move, would you adopt those as submitted?
I so move, your worship. Maybe he should use the one beside him, maybe?
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, and that's taken care of. Do you want to proceed to the administration? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. All right, information items, the CAO report.
Thank you, your worship. Just briefly, I was on vacation August third through sixth last week. A few items of the attention of the CAO from previous meeting was council remuneration committee support, which you'll see the results of that in the package today. Community economic development advisory group work on next steps, which will see the fruition of that work towards the middle of September, getting the group together. Also, I'd like to just talk to council a bit about your expectations in regards to the September fourth rodeo parade, and if you wish to have participation with that event, and how does that look for you? If a float of some sort would be put together, we have not concluded the administrative work on pricing out of float, but just seeing how you wish to participate as council on that day.
Any questions? Any discussion on that report? Now, that's your proposing... Administration is proposing this parade for the fourth?
Your worship, the parade is a rodeo parade. It's September the fourth, just looking to see how council wishes to participate with that event.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, what I was trying to say... Okay, what I was trying to say, previous, that I think council should write in the brief, and by the way, I'll be waiting for second. Fifteen questions. I think this might be a job we have to do. Okay, please, more. Okay. Just... You guys can all stand up for the closer. Okay. I think everyone that appeared anybody else speak on this could go out. Great issue, but appears that no one has any objection to it, so I'm assuming that you wanted to just... Any motion to that of help? I just wanted to hear. All right, and we have a motion to accept the CEO report as submitted.
I so move.
Thank you, counselor, revere here, and further discussion. All in favor? Motion carries. CEO Becker, you have a question for that action. Just one item, council, just on the development partnership agreement, action item. So, we're going to continue working on this action, but we need to pay over the further when I just look at one specific opportunity, I could look at maybe another possibility. It's a more of a internally administrative developments, if it'd be, I guess. And it looks pretty blank, but what administration would like to do to develop a business case? It would be part of this action, but think a little bit further. However, within that zone, two months within term of council, you'll likely not be achieved within your term, unfortunately. And there's one of the community that you'd like to meet in drafts, well, with the new council, into that probably go to advance in October, probably drafts November, December, due to be a draft, right? Something's out there, kind of give it this title of your term. We'd like to look at this, maybe, for council consideration, to look at this action item. I would tend to partnership to, or for development, but to look at another opportunity, council may want to consider, as well, here with you, that I just wanted to bring that to attention, that you're liking on it, to be able to get here to the council, unfortunately. Okay. Does anybody have anything to comment or question? No? And what's on my mind is that we accept this control on information. All of them. Thank you, counselor. Barclay, all in favor of the motion?
Carried. Man, another, regarding council remuneration. Thank you, your worship. So, the council remuneration policy indicates that council appoint citizens or members of large, we evaluate the commitment, make recommendations through council regarding council remuneration, for remuneration event this package. The views are to appear in the main, for the council's term and toward the end of council's term, which is where we're at right now. For application process, council appoint four members to the committee. The council remuneration review committee consisted of Arnold Glover, Alvin Hannah, Bill Hoffman, and Rhonda King. It must be noted that the line report that although the administration supports the committee, undertake their work, the members are not connected to council or administration, and the recommendations about the suited interaction and deliberation amongst the council committee members themselves. Council remuneration committee, compensation philosophy was developed in committee and was considered upon factors, past recommendation that he data within existing policy, avoidance of any commentary of perceived council's efficacy or productivity, previous committee awards, noting the last increase within twenty seventeen with the right to follow work in twenty nineteen, comparative studies about accounting compensation awards, external factors such as past current rates of inflation and international price index, or otherwise you know, CPI, the council's current financial dividend, debt burden and reserves, and consideration of local market conditions that are not included in the committee's fundamental perceptions. So, committee, we've come up with recommendations for council consideration, the line in record, just leaving all the detail. The council remuneration committee recommends those halls, council remuneration on air provide a reason, remuneration increase, two point for a twenty-five percent effective from the date of council organizational meeting of twenty twenty-one, for a period of two years, until the next year view of passing out, as we invite the committee, with our remuneration, provide an increase of five percent effective from the date of council for innovation meeting of twenty twenty-one, for a period of two years. Travel expenses, making travel expenses of the same term as currently provided, with the exception that mileage rates may be adjusted to line of eighteen, every time the regulations. Council benefits, meaning council benefits, benefits will scope an extent from the same term as currently provided, the discipline of non-negotiable inflationary increases in the previous, able to insurance companies. And as well, for council to consider amendment to the terms, policy changing the word, will receive annual council living increase to may receive based on circumstance. Council, council should be aware that administration didn't indicate that housing job is definitely rational to their decision, the document I had recorded already, but in more detail, committee's rationale made to achieve this recommendation for you is a ten CPI of three point six percent in the annual inflation rate, all from the past five years, with an average annually of one point eight percent. As I have not too further, we wrote relative parity levels, established in previous years, but not avoiding the remuneration increase during the review, named within the market, noting that there have been no proposition made that remuneration increase would now require in order to catch up on the absence of any previous cases in previous years. As well, recognition that major criteria for taking on the responsibility of town council is based fully on remuneration, but should include the supposition that elected council's role is to suck and stay expected to be at unpaid voluntary capacity with an element of community service and faculty. As well, as I asked each of the reports, I see with any increases are financial impacts, that we could see there that there are impacts financially from currently seven hundred dollars in there, the proposed rate of twenty-three-five. Counselor monthly, thirteen hundred dollars to thirteen hundred sixty-five dollars, per D amount be a hundred five dollars to a hundred and ten, with all the twenty-five cents, and the per D rate increase about two hundred and ten dollars to two hundred twenty dollars and different cents. So, with that, council, administration is communicating on the fee, the out on the recommendations, I do know you have committee reps here, as well online as well, but that's a basis from there. We need to have a team that came up with those recommendations before. If there's any questions or comments, we'd be happy to answer your questions.
I, the only question I have, I see, a review of other communities were taken into consideration that are already, we're not trying to, you know, go above anybody else, or touch the promise we're in, I guess, in parity, I think, with the industry, but, um, my only concern is that we are. Yeah, we can't, we don't have that information.
Actually, we can pull that up, just a thing that we got, just for your own clarity, we have, we look at, in this sort of view, to, we're standing for gratitude, we have administratively provided initially some information, we can direct to administration to provide further analysis, whether review occurred, and if you know, the G S P, you know, so the review was pretty intense, and Vanessa's pulled that up, where you're figuring, you just need understanding where you can sit up other G S P's. Okay, any other questions? Also, for this remuneration back. No? If not, I guess, what? Is counsel prepared to make a motion right now, with these recommendations? That I can...
I'm prepared to make a motion, except the, except the recognition of the remuneration committee and super approval as the draft, because the remuneration policy is twenty point four and zero, so.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
Your worship, I am not a favorer this time, and I appreciate the community doing all the work that they've done for us, but I think we've had two years of no merit for moving to a more important, so, actually, in November, we've had something totally important, but this coming here, we have a community that is coming out of, just coming out of, well, my family and businesses, but we're trying to get that under, and I'm just thinking, at this point in time, taking a five percent increase is not very optics, and it's just not the time, and a couple of years, when things are sorted out, and get back, when things, I guess, a little bit more in motion, and I'm sure, but, just I mean, not, not a bigger risk.
Okay, thank you, counselor.
I think I would be a favorer of this, because a couple of years ago, in the tax law scheme, we had that, the council took a rollback, because of the extra taxes, and we were not paying, so, in light of that, I think this is reasonable, a lot of the area, the community around us, increased their, the council, our areas at that time, we didn't, so, keeping that in mind, I think this is a reasonable regulation, regulation. Your worship.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I personally can understand with the comments of Counselor Barclay, I, it is a, you know, it's a top-down, leadership approach that council has demonstrated to our whole term, that we've, their staff, all our hardworking members, and I would be okay with, with, I agree it's a reasonable request, and the recommendations are quite reasonable, but on principle, why, I would be in support of not accepting the five percent increase, and looking at it in two years' time, for future councils to consider that.
Counselor Lee, so, just another comment or two, so, I guess, I would be content to wait until council, Harrison, back to the, um, council, also reiterate the points, and it was, you could pass those, that you worship, that comment previously, that was huge, and it put a load on your salaries, I'm sure, and I do believe we've fallen behind on other new salaries. I don't see Temple reaching any chart, and I'm sure they're burning the money, and there was only a increase in the last two, two years and two years. So, for that reason, I think if we continue to get behind, it's another kind of, it's not, it's not a really significant, huge increase. So, for that reason, I make a motion that I am in support of it, for that reason.
Your worship, are we using table desents, or just because it's, are we, some type of issue with that, too? I'd say, are we discussing things?
Yes, you have, if you want, as council decide, I wish to, we have to be on a, as far as, so. Oh, do we have, we have a motion? Yeah, we made a motion that we consider.
Okay.
I'm sure, all right, about the remuneration policy, which is, actually. By, by my logic, I don't think I would agree with it, not in the debate, just, already there are motions, there comes forcing, that's more important, should, then, either, members missing, so, to me, that, not see, right? Okay, any further discussion? Does the area have any comments? I, I know the same feeling, as you mentioned, that we got a big hit in two thousand and nineteen, I believe, when the federal government removed the exemption, public, council, servants were given honorary credits for, so, it was a big hit, quite frankly, I don't think this is bringing something where we were four years ago, but anyways, I understand both arguments, I'm, I'm too, Japer, Counselor Barclay's philosophy, that, you know, we don't appear to be, be greedy here, but on this, on the other hand, I have to, um, understand how everything has evolved over the last four years, it's been written on paper, so I think it's important, I know it's not a lot of money, but it's still important to have honorary and, you know, to attract qualified people that are interested in the go off, and, uh, although it's not a lot of money, it does also, with expenses and things that we incur, but, uh, I don't know, I, I think I'm going to support the motion, I know it doesn't affect me, because, no, it doesn't stall, but I'm taking, I mean, I'm got, on, on the quality applicants, hopefully encourage more people to run, but, on the other hand, we need some, so I would support the motion. Any other comments? And I'll call the question, all in favor of the motion? Propose? Motion is carried. Okay, and thank you for that, Mr. Becker, thank you for putting that group together, and getting it organized.
The, your worship, administration, as I said, so, the research, I shouldn't say that, because it could have been all worked, so, it's all been Vanessa, but, the committee, the committee did a big job, the remuneration's board by, largely Vanessa, I certainly acknowledge that they, their party on their presentation, but really cool to see the work of the foreman, although they're not coaching it very well, so, it's all just flashback to the book, or completely.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone, the next leg of our agenda, sixty-fourth, due to special tax, bylaw.
All.
Thank you, your worship. Administration informed council initially of a letter received by Chad Evans, press and solicitor posing questions to the technical requirements of the special tax bylaw, the one that was approved by council, relating to the sixty-first valley road development project, which that project was completed in twenty twenty. Administration presented a request for decision, reported to council on the July twenty-sixth council meeting, voting, the administrative review of technical components of the special tax bylaw, sixteen sixty-seven, twenty twenty-one, and that, of that, of communications with the impact of landowners to own, and owners leading up the application of the special tax bylaw. At the twenty, frustrated, at the July twenty-sixth meeting, council fielded administrative review of sixty-first valley special tax bylaw, then for administration to seek clarification of the, and Mr. Evans's June twenty-sixth management. As the report indicates, Mr. Evans was contacted on July twenty-seventh, seeking clarification of the letter. The conversation confirmed that the nature of the letter does not mean that as connotational, that it's not a formal request for the property owners to be reimbursed, the property owners are leaving the matter to council's discretion. To recount administration review results of the bylaw, as per Mr. Evans's letter, which shall be two sections of, of the bylaw, MGE section thirty-eight, section C, indicates that the bylaw do not clearly reference the estimated cost of the service or purpose within the bylaw. Section three, by the project was properly included, was properly included within the twenty twenty budget, not the current climate budget that Mr. Evans indicated. Further review indicated also that section thirty-eight, three eighty-four, A, the bylaw is not, and the department does not see the specific service or purpose of which the bylaw has passed. As well, the review of the communications compliance with the man orders, from administrative perspective, there was not adequate information shared with each property owner in advance of the bylaw, via approved by a council, however, it would be beneficial to provide written notice to each property owner, following the approval of the bylaw, awaiting council's decision, and the exact details of how the special tax bylaw, the right to use in that sale, although that is not required of the MGA. Option for council consideration, the amendment by sixteen sixty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, with the menu bylaw, to have the details concerning the specific service or purpose for which the bylaw was passed, and state the actual cause of the service or purpose. Add, council issues formal communication be affected, property owners advising them of when the menu bylaw could be presented before council, and how could it be earned, so desired. Another option for council consideration, the bylaw as is, going forward, for administration to prepare annual special tax bylaw, that is in accord to the MGA, however, this is not advised, if the government, for some formal challenge of the bylaw itself. Lastly, for council, another option, council consideration for council, to repeal the bylaw, overturn the levies, and then, ensure the annual bylaws apply to MGA, and wish council could either collect for two years, four years, two to fifteen, which is worth fifty, worth fifty hundred dollars in twenty twenty-one, or calculate annual levy based on fourteen years. Administration's recommendation has not changed from the initial July twenty-sixth report, however, recognition that directs administration to draft the menu bylaw for by sixteen sixty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, that all means this project has been deposited, and the state the specific purpose of the bylaw. The reasons for administration's recommendation is that although the, all poetic to you, council is one of the man orders for the bylaw, not, right thinking here, in part to the MGA, have written, the purpose of the bylaw and the rationale to reflect the property owners who pay for... to affect the property owners who pay the portion share of the project has not changed. The question of the technical requirements of the bylaw was identified and can be addressed through the many bylaw. The landlords are not requesting reimbursement for repealing the bylaw or reboot the bylaw. Lastly, the landlords remain aware of the approximate financial impact of the special tax by law prior to the bylaw being approved by council. Um, respecting the fact communications, um, uh, only bylaw approval was not, um, provided to affect the property owners. That concludes my report, council, is there any questions, is there any comments that you have to do if we have other topic?
Is anyone, uh, prepared to make a motion or to support this staff or communication? I saw the review. Very interesting. Absolutely, no. Discussion. By me? Thank you, worship.
Bye, I think, uh, a lot of you did table this to get this on this end, she does. Uh, basically off of clear, we think a long ball decision. And yeah, I, I was, once again, thank administration for doing that clarity. And, uh, and I will be supporting, uh, given to this, uh, trade house.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Your worship, I am in favor of this recommendation, I am in favor of options. The reason is, this letter was written for a reason, um, for this law. They just wrote a letter for the, the fact that, um, it seems to be clear that the bylaw did not defend the parties. So most stated in three forty and seventy, and that is, we had some steps in communication, um, in favor of, you know, collecting fifty percent of half of this project going forward, but I think we should get by law in order first. I must feel like it's just, if I, I was given a speeding ticket and the protocol wasn't followed. But now, oh, it's going to change everything, so that now my place to take it is going to stand. So I want to get our, everything done properly and then come back, but, you know, do this, uh, literally, desperately, MGA. Communications strategy that's, that we've heard.
The whole of my business. Okay, thank you. Any else? Counselor Reaver.
Uh, I think I'm in favor of the recommended motion to amend this. I think that clears it up for this year and puts us in the shape going forward. Addresses. Design.
Counselor Bates.
Yes, for the reasons kind of already decided, I said, for the motion as well. There were, the technical, the motion is, the technical. Um, changes and, uh, I think it was clear to virtually everyone, what was happening. And I do know that they were forcing the project, they're, they're being asked, maybe over the years of this. Just really there and, um. Yeah, I I'm just very, but especially with the clarification, like, will be just a second. Not paid, so. Thank you.
Your worship, can I ask you a question? Is there some possibility that this will be a challenge?
I, I might give you that from the usual with this rounds, um, we identified the letter nor the key to that. Um, we did get legal on this and we may escape the bylaw, this technical breakdown. If we don't change it, we'd be challenged, but coming to many bylaw, where the council indicates recovery basis. We did, there's some shortcomings in the bylaw, but down to many bylaw, um, without the, uh, the common the name difficulty for a lot of the.
Your worship, can I ask you a question about why, why this is simple, that this law protect? That we don't understand quite why it was simple. They're not challenging the process.
I think the report's pretty clear in what I communicated to all Mr. Evans, that they're seeing some technical, uh, challenges within the current bylaw, um, but the council, in your, in your ability to be less right, um, there's no dedication you want to be reimbursed, um. I don't know, I don't engage with the property owners specifically, um, I did talk to Mr. Evans and legal that there was some shortcomings in the, uh, challenging the technical requirement for the bylaw. And then nothing to matter, it's clear from my perspective, but, uh, I think he just wanted to make less ratings within that bylaw, is what I could tell.
All right, any other discussion? Oh, not, uh, we have a motion to, uh, proceed with this draft and the bylaw. Clear way is to draw. So, uh, ask that question, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion is carried. So you don't just bring back the opposed one, you can be very. Correct. All right, um, on to.
An RFP regarding advocacy impacts with the RCP, in privation. Thank you, worship. Uh, purpose of this report, providing council information regarding the impact of the RCP as, uh, premiumization and recommended advocacy, council considers consideration. Uh, but I'm also consider a finer advocacy abilities, uh, if so desired. The background to this report, um, council has a bit of a conversation with, with video name. Um, and so administration, um, did this expose this regarding what is occurring with the RCP. With A and B, recently engaged with the urban utilities, uh, providing information regarding the dispute impacts, the RCP during negotiations. In this value for dispute, uh, five years of retroactive pay increases could be incurred in the new contract, which is being treated, um, uh, concluding in September, one way or green. From the little information that I've been provided, it seems that town of Minnesota could be subject to a retroactive payment of five hundred thousand dollars. Although there is indication of increased odds of ever of twenty thousand dollars, which you create an annual budget piece of approximately two hundred thousand dollars based on our members. Just a side note, uh, the town of Minnesota paid for ten RCP members, the passion holds seventeen, um, seven members are affiliated by the law, so we're served by two agreements, actually three, but two. One is, um, their municipal service agreement and then seven members by provincial service agreement. Then there are some traffic enforcement members also of the veteran passions. At this time, the town has not been issued an invoice of the, it's a direct law of the pay and has not received correspondence with increased budgetary charges in future, so. But, um, we do, uh, assess that we will be receiving an invoice, your pleasure. Just want to note that, uh, each year the town gets a, an annual multi-year financial plan as a, over the course of a few years. So in review of the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven, in this value, we need fully cashable year financial plan. Never references to dispute increases to rate of America at two point five percent period compound annually from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, this one year. This report also references, um, unfortunately, for the fully purchased community values under the population of fifteen thousand. So there is an indication that, um, in the near future, individuals will be subject to, uh, body care and paths on equipment, such as armor, pistols, uh, et cetera, associated with our, our tech members. Administration wants to ensure the community messaging is understood, keeps the other consultation associated with police. The passion, the usually stated to like, right now, speak to the concern of a lot of transparency and consultation with communities as the provincial government explored the notion of creating a provincial peace service. Council, if you recall, in your agenda packages, we prepare for dozens of learning municipalities advocating support to the governing board to maintain RCP as over its primary police force. Another factor that council may consider, uh, you got there's a significant pay disparity between the RCP and other police forces in Canada. On average, many disparity, uh, support, protect costs, Canada is seventy percent grown up. Why this information is informed is that there is potential for the RCP to be, I don't even think they're money for you. Put aside publicly as the provincial government advances the provincial police force sessions. And that seems to all these face financial pressures to address these different costs. So the intent of this report again, council has designed to see if they understand what is going on with the police, uh, um, RCP contract, uh, and if it feels, uh, appropriate to, um, work toward the recommended recommendation because it stands, we've added to the honorable bill of our mission of public safety count, which rests in concern of the power of town of Annesville, will be attacked and by the like of bargaining, we recently have been negotiating with the government of Canada and the National Police Federation, we have the RCP members, and there is a draft letter that the party's figured consideration. That's my report.
All right, um, we have the information recommendation that, uh, council, um, directed by administration, sent this file, built layer, and, uh, the motion is supported.
Why it hasn't been seen?
Discussion. I think we all sent the. Overfashioned, but, uh, hoping that, that is, give us some, uh, time. Too much to worry for this year. Counselor Bates, that's from it and certainly in favor of the connection, motion out in the paper. We're still being also with the voice or pressing that to, of, uh, what was it, they're not, they're saying that, it doesn't look like when they get into the process.
That leads up the conversation to that with the person. It's great that the Canada try to visit federal. Back to the situation. Any other discussion? I'll ask a question and I'll make a question. Thank you. Carrie. All right. Correspondents' information consideration.
Worship. See, after the first of the last.
Yes.
Yes, sure, but yes, there is a request for sponsorship. Um, getting out of fight of dollars from the, uh, in prior review. We discussed you three and all that, that's when they had six hundred percent to four. Um, just a bit of background, I guess we have provided sponsorship to the review in the past. Uh, it was newly available in twenty twenty. In twenty eighteen, there was a twenty-five hundred dollar sponsorship, um, already from the contingency that year. In twenty eighteen, twenty sixteen, uh, twenty-five hundred was also provided, uh, over the community grant program. It's all about the still goes here. And then in twenty seventeen, we also, uh, correct, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars. The most amount of assistance there is where, uh, the budget passed. Uh, those funds came from, but there has been a history of many contributions to the review. So this one.
Absolutely. I would agree. Uh, maybe do sponsorship to the review of twenty-five hundred dollars. From where we have to show. Any discussion on that? Just some clarity, worship. Prior, um, where previous years you said you want community fund.
Um, so there has been taken from that community grant budget line. Uh, typically as opposed to no notifications, we know of the community services standing committee. Um, the requests and the put back to council as a recurring event, such as the community of the national group criteria. We have of the community direct program. Um, so council has chosen the town to get started on the thirteen thousand dollars each year that is plenty enough that's a community grant. Uh, for council information, so it's that thousand dollars being the current grant. Uh, it's like a company right now.
With the twenty-five hundred off the.
No, twenty-five hundred.
Because what you do is F C S F with the twenty-five hundred dollars, wait a few months, every year, every year, surprise. Or not. Probably. Okay, that's I just want to say. Any other discussion? The, uh. Okay, we want to measure us in serious methodology. Oh, I see, okay. All right. On the floor, I'll debate the motion. Carrie. Serious methodology of. Relax. Actually. Over. So compared to make a motion, you got. And correct that question. I want some of your worship. That's hell. All in favor of the motion? Carrie? You do. Yes. Your worship. Is, uh, actually.
Have we in the past done the whole sponsorship? I can't remember. Yeah.
Worship counselor fees, I believe it was, um, did it's part of the. Case of him throwing out of his sponsorship.
There's a hard set of.
Yeah. So would be patient with the time of sponsorship. More on what. Do you want to? For that, it's. Okay, so would be that sponsorship. To. So. Support. I think it's very structured, but, um. If you have the council, you know, use something similar or like any, uh, other packages or not at all, certainly. Well, I'm. Your discussion. I don't see the. So I would believe, uh, for key for golfers in the district. Excuse me, I have a constant confusion. Okay. Motion is supporting the golfing plans. Over, uh, seven hundred dollars. And I do. Seems to. Any group of discussion? I'll ask you a question. All in favor of the motion? Both are in discussion.
Just want to make sure. Where are we already playing on already playing? Are there no other? Um, council papers or anything? So. Is there not? Play with the administration. Depending on what you package inside of.
That would be. Counselor H. Yeah, I was thinking even before, even before people then end up being golfers with words through the hundreds of years. Come up, do this, but also be a whole sponsorship. I don't know what this rule was for a whole sponsorship or whatever. Now we keep like it, you know, we play and study back to a whole sponsorship as well. So you should call for a few hours. That's it. I do believe that. We that's a long time. Which I. That's why I. Do it that in the past few weeks. And. But. They're money should go. Past three blocks. Well, that it's still, it's still the benefit to three weeks ago. And it's still like, uh, you know, so advancing with a whole sponsorship. So we committed to that and then basically every, every individual golfer would then take four for a hundred dollars. I guess it's potentially a seventy-five dollar savings for me to go play golf. At least it's a hundred dollars, but then total towards a whole sponsorship. I think that would be reasonable. On the half of the town. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. What is motion supposedly? For the four hundred dollars of sponsorship? So. So I, I think the motion would be there. Our whole sponsor for four hundred dollars. And then for four dollars. Would expect. Exposition after four hundred. To take the. So you know. So. Yeah. Okay. Now. All in favor of the motion? Carrie. Here. Okay. I wish that on him. On do that. Hey, but he did, he did the other. He did it on. Okay. And we'll check.
So which is a better that, so what's on from here? The community said we're coming for recreation. Is that? Sorry, did we never said it?
Yes, it is. Yes. So the green lights of. How's market's fashion? It's fired at the center for the first fight twenty-two. The sprite, you know, clients and shit. Um. And then you did a county review all based on either party's request to, uh, to the curse. Reportedly comments. The next council on, on that agreement that was one of their expectations. Okay, well. She might, uh, we just recorded on.
I'll make a motion, your worship, and my microphone's working.
Test. Okay, we have a motion. Apparently our technical issue has been fixed. Anyways, we have a motion on the floor to support this, uh, these correspondents. All in favor of the motion? Carry it. All right, let's have a quick round table discussion. Counselor Hill.
Thank you, worship. Um. Can everyone hear me? I can't hear myself, but that's. Well, I just jinxed it. And, um, no, I don't have much to report. I was actually out yesterday with the, uh, Kinsman Club, um, assisting with a couple of their, uh, T posts of where the launch pads are going to be for the disc golf course. So, um, the town has done a lot of work out there and looks really good, uh, for mowing the areas. And, yeah, I think it, it actually really, I was really proud of the town because there's, like, they were blown, blown away by how much has actually been done. It totally doubled their expectations of how much was, uh, was done compared to the ask, so that's great. And, uh, yeah, basically the baskets are in and, um, all the padlocks are placed in there and it's, uh, ready to, ready to go. So, um, I do know there's a few local businesses that are actually getting their logos put on some, uh, disc golf discs. So they will be available in our community to buy. So it'd be kind of, kind of fun to, uh, get different discs from different communities, uh, different businesses. So something just to, if you don't know where to buy them, you can find them in our community. But, uh, yeah, other than that, it was really exciting to see the baskets finally go in their final resting places. So anyways, that's all I have to add. Thanks, worship.
So with the A and P canceled last week, um, so since previous meeting, I guess I attended the A U M A, uh, session on, um, end of July and. M P C last week and most of my committees seem to be on August vacation, so. Haven't done a whole lot else. Thank you.
Try this one? Oh, I don't know. Okay, yeah, yeah, attended A U M A Municipal Leaders Caucus as well as M P C last week. And I also, another bouquet for the, the town, the skate bar capacitor program. I received, uh, uh, message from Tasha Bush. She, she wanted me to read this at council. Uh, she said, our kids are just at that age where we can leave them at the skateboard park without supervision. So like anywhere, there are some kids that are there to cause trouble, but the majority of kids are there, that are there are good. So having Jace there, I think, just changes the vibe. And they have all said he's great and they love chatting with him. It is peace of mind for parents knowing someone is watching when we can't. And they think, the kids think he's really cool, so.
Anyways. I did attend this on a caucus in July there. Uh, we have this story with you. Last minute thing. Please recommend all the soul-quickened ice cream this summer. At the lantern festival, they've done very well with that. They do have a. You know, already they have a tea every Friday this summer. They have a tea. And it'll be two sitting. People sign up for. This Thursday, I have the transportation committee. And just want to comment on these fifty-seven street, forty-eight thousand. Wait, it's crazy. Been in I saw for a long time. Nice to be down there. That's all.
Okay, I, I don't think I have, have a heck of a lot to report either. We, uh, I've noticed the, uh, substantial, uh, amount of progress done on projects in town here. And that's good to see. I see, yeah, it looks like order paving is moving over to do the south now to thirty-eighth and down there. So it's, uh, looking good, coming together. But I don't have anything else really to report on. I think we've, uh, most, like, most, uh, the committees right now are not, uh, too active. But, uh, I have been invited to the grand opening of the, uh, the county's, um, trade. Trades, trade fair facilities in gasoline alleys. So just, uh, been invited to attend the grand opening. Um, other than that, I don't think I have anything else. Uh, I'll go around. Director Kennedy, have you got anything?
I have the man, I have the stock money, so.
Yeah. Okay, Director Jenk.
Uh, yes, I just, I wanted to bring up an inquiry of the council for potential discussions. So we have, um, received contact from the chamber regarding the business community awards gala. Um, looking at an October fifteenth, uh, potential date for this gala this fall. Um, in the past, so we just actually presented our twenty twenty awards this way in March and April. Um, and just looking for some info from council as to whether we want to continue with this event. Or it's an opportunity to have a, a little bit of a review. Um, typically, it's about a thirty-five hundred dollar budget, uh, on the town that is for the event. Uh, with the town providing a fair bit of language in terms of being, um, the setup and applying for that. So just wanted to, to open that discussion, to see what the thoughts are on that event.
Thank you, worship. Um, I, I do think it's, it, it, it has its place. I think it's important for a lot of community or, or people in our community that have received these awards. That they get the recognition that obviously they've earned and deserved. Um, so it would be hard to essentially squish it. But I, I think it would be something that, I don't know if it's, you know, an upscale or downscale, depending on, you know, oh, what the chamber feels, but I, I think we should be assisting in some capacity to make sure it proceeds. Cause there can be a lot of new businesses or other, you know, established businesses that, you know, it's been very tough for them. So this recognition, I think, is well deserved.
Your worship, through to Director Jenkins, I would agree with Counselor Hill. Like, I think it's important that we're involved and I think the, the two events kind of came together a couple, two or three years ago. Um, just to take some pressure off both parties, but I'm just wondering about the date. If it, maybe that's not the best date, maybe could move it into November or something or end of October.
Any other discussion in that regard? Okay, I think, uh, there's some support there, I think, to continue, uh, Megan. But, um, yeah, I'm sure you'll be able to take that from, from here and pursue your other, uh, affected bodies as well in that event. Anyways, uh. Ken, what did you do? How'd you fix the sound?
Don't think it's fixed.
You're not, you're not going to take credit, right?
He's the cadare.
He's radio.
Just go through the, the, uh, gallery here. If you've got anything, Gary, I know you're here for business, so.
I'd just like to say thank you for allowing me to, uh, not participate in the council, the interaction. I think everyone's been saying, um, uh, we just feel a little bit like Skype.
Yeah. Okay, good. Ron.
I have to agree with that. Thank you, you were made considering of the four people that sat on that committee. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm. Not the first time I've been on that committee and I look forward to hearing it again in the future. I support Lake Arm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to get perceived by some people.
Yeah.
That's. Shouldn't have happened, but I, I think it should.
Yeah.
We need to maintain quality.
Hopefully it helps. Yeah. Yeah. Vanessa, you got anything?
No.
She, Albecker, no report on holidays or?
Take seven hours to catch one fish. God's lake.
We got. Okay, uh, hopefully is there an opportunity for the outside, uh, cyber?
Only Johnny.
Only Johnny?
Yeah.
Oh, poor Johnny.
Is raised as well?
No.
Oh, okay. All right.
This is seriously. See if I get a phone call.
Okay, well, I think that concludes our open mic session and, um, upcoming events. List of, uh, events there. Uh, other than that, I would, uh, see, I, oh.
Worship, just want to highlight. On September ninth of another calendar completion session, he runs a party three, it was strategic steps to be two sessions. Um, will be all the same, but it's, uh, will be ordered in the next week. You're about to vote that are maybe in this one in this council, um, are invited or even in this every year. What it takes for a future, uh, we're estimating that this stayed on that session. You'll see that on.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, go in camera. Counselor Hill. Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? Thank you, everybody. Arnold?
Thank you.